Tuning into this 2023 General Election Candidate Forum for the Griffin School District Board of Directors, Districts 1 and Districts 3. This forum is presented by the League of Women Voters of Thurston County in collaboration with Thurston Community Media. The League of Women Voters is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always working on vital issues of concern to members and to the public to defend our democracy and empower voters. I'm Danny Stusser with the League, and I'll be moderating this forum. Carol Goss will be our timer. The Griffin School Board oversees the Griffin School District, which is located in northwest Thurston County and the Steamboat Peninsula. The Griffin School Board is comprised of five elected school board directors and three student advisors. The board develops and adopts policy governing all facets of school operations. School Board Directors are responsible for hiring and supervising the school superintendent, setting the vision, the mission, and strategic goals for the district, adopting school board policies, establishing the school district budget, and monitoring the district's progress toward its goals. This forum includes candidates for Griffin School Board Districts 1 and 3. The candidates for District 1 are Tessa Freevert and Matt Dorsey. The candidates for District 3 are Blair Baker and David Congezer. David Congezer is out of town but is joining us through Zoom. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer a series of questions. We will call on candidates by district in alphabetical order. The questions will be alternated so that each has a chance to start first. You each may give one, a one-minute closing statement. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. If you need me to repeat the question, don't hesitate to ask. The timer will turn yellow when you have 15 seconds left, and then we'll show a stop sign when your time is up. If you don't notice the sign, I will tell you when your time is up. We stress the importance of civility in our forums. Candidates, you have each received the ground rules for the forum and have agreed to abide by them. For the first question, I'll begin with Matt Dorsey. Question 1: What makes you the most qualified candidate for this position?
Throughout my career, working for large companies and in local small business ownership, I've developed skill sets in policy and procedure creation, budget formulation, managing employees, and managing, evaluating the performance of employees, and evaluating the results of policies that we put into place, all of which fall under the governing responsibilities of a school board director. Over the past three years, my wife and I have home schooled our children to get through COVID. This has given me experience in curriculum development, setting educational goals, and developing and implementing learning plans for both elementary and middle school aged children that produced assessments high above state averages. I'm a resident in the Griffin School District with a child enrolled at Griffin School in 6th grade, so I have a vested interest in making sure the school runs efficiently.
Thank you. Tessa Freevert.
Thank you. I believe I'm the most qualified candidate for school board because of my passion for fostering positive change and my proven commitment to our community's children. I am dedicated to ensuring all students receive a high-quality education. My ongoing involvement at Griffin School District as a parent volunteer and a substitute teacher demonstrates my commitment to our students' well-being and success. Having spent a significant amount of time in Griffin School District has allowed me to connect with our students, our teachers, and our administrators, and really understand the challenges that they face from a firsthand perspective. I also have extensive experience in business finance, managing multimillion-dollar budgets and grants. Using these skills and talents, I truly am the best candidate for Griffin School Board.
Thank you, District 1 candidates. Now to the District 3 candidates. First, we'll go to Blair Baker.
Thank you, Danny. I'm a lifelong Griffin community member. I believe in transparency in our district. I believe that every child matters. I believe that all decisions that I make and we make collectively as a school board should reflect, first and foremost, the needs of every child in our district. I believe in providing equal access and opportunity for all families and all children in our school district. My hope and goal for our school district is to create more community involvement and opportunities for our families to have more transparency and say in what happens in our district. I believe that we have a very unique opportunity in the Griffin School District to set a very positive example of what a functional school district can be with so many struggles happening around us. In outside school districts, I believe that we have a very exceptional opportunity to provide an amazing educational opportunity for all students in our district.
The next candidate is David Congezer. David, the question is, what makes you the most qualified candidate for this position? David Congezer.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the opportunity to do this via Zoom. Appreciate that. I think I'm most qualified for this position based on my previous involvement with youth as a soccer coach. I've been a soccer coach for over 10 years at various levels, boys and girls, and it's a great opportunity for me to see growth and self-confidence in children. So I also have several other experiences through my current work in the city of Tom Water where I'm a water resources specialist. Part of my routine at my current job is I'm, you know, develop policy to, develop policy to meet state and federal regulations, which is a direct, you know, thing that the board needs to accomplish as well, so I have that experience. I also have the opportunity through my current work to engage students through outreach and education program that we currently offer, partnering with the Tom Water School District to offer some on-hand, hands-on science curriculum and restoration.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. For the next question, I'll begin with Tessa Freevert. In 2021, the state legislature passed a law requiring school directors to receive training on cultural competency, diversity, equity, and inclusion as they relate to education. What is your opinion of the need for school board directors to participate in such training? Tessa.
I think that if we want to be implementing diversity, equity, and inclusion training within our schools, it needs to start from the top down, meaning we as board members need to know what we're going to be teaching and implementing in our schools. So that training can look like a number of different things, whether it be from D E I trainers themselves or from bringing in outside sources, outside people who have lived experiences that can share their experiences and help us grow.
Thank you. Blair.
Repeat the question for me, please, Danny.
In 2021, the state legislature passed a law requiring school board directors to receive training on cultural competency, diversity, equity, and inclusion as they relate to education. What's your opinion of the need for school board directors to receive, to participate in such training?
I think the need for D E I training is very valuable. I think it makes a difference for everyone to feel like all people's needs are met at all levels. The, I think for me, more than D E I training, it's about, again, creating access and opportunity for students and staff at all levels. I do believe in D E I training. I think it is very valuable. Again, I'd just like to make sure that the D E I training we're all receiving is actually doing the work of D E I training, which is including and bringing us together, and not some of the other D E I training, which is, in my opinion, been more divisional than it has been positive in our school district. So I am all for D E I training that is inclusive and bringing people together, not at a divisional level.
Thank you. David.
Yeah, I think diversity, equity, and inclusion training is, at its core, is vital to preparing our children and our school board for the, you know, the society that we're entering in today. I've taken diversity, equity, and inclusion training through my current job, and it gave me a unique perspective into some of the challenges that some of, some folks are facing out there, that, you know, some challenges that I might not see. So I think it's very helpful. I think it's very vital for, for our folks to, to understand, you know, the basis for where that type of training comes from. And like Blair said, I think, you know, it's, it's important that we consider the way that we're introducing it to our kids and whatnot, and make sure it's a constructive type of, of training and that it's building relationships.
Thank you. Matt Dorsey.
Yeah, I think we all can agree that diversity, equity, and inclusion are great things, but only if we could actually agree on what those terms actually mean when they are implemented. I think we need to make equity about education. When we use academic assessments as the lenses through which we use to evaluate where a student is at and the resources they need to be able to reach their full academic potential, regardless of their, their race or socioeconomic background, or, that is when I believe that we will achieve true equity.
Thank you. For the third question, we'll begin with Blair Baker. Question 3: What do you think are the main challenges facing the school board, and how do you propose addressing them?
I think the main challenges facing our school board right now is, I think in our district particularly right now, we've had a little bit of a mumpy start to our particular school year. I think we're facing some issues with teacher contracts. I think we're facing some issues with some concerns with parent involvement in our districts, and I think that obviously there's always some budget concerns with how that our money's spent. I think those are typical things that face a lot of school districts. I think more so our district right now, and I think that it's all about community involvement. I think it's about getting people interested and invested in what's happening with our school board and our schools. I think it's about getting information out there. I think it's about transparency, and I think it's about not just parent involvement but community involvement. This school is the heart of our district, and I think it's about getting people to understand that everyone has a voice and everyone matters, and we need people to come and be involved and invested and understand that, come and speak up, come and speak out, you matter to us, and we need your voice.
David Congezer.
Yeah, I think these are some of the most challenging times that our district has faced so far, and a lot of that stems from, you know, the contract that we still need to negotiate with, with the union. I think there's some, some pieces in there that we could work out that would help, help our teachers feel supported in the work that they're doing. I think some of the other issues in our contract that we need to work out are some of the I E P concerns that some of the parents have that have been voiced. There's always room for improvement there. And then, you know, we also need to consider the evaluation process for our current superintendent, and is this the best fit for, for our school district?
Matt Dorsey.
Yeah, so obviously, one of the number-one challenges our school district is going through right now is we have an interim superintendent that is new to the district, so her continued performance evaluation needs to be looked at by this current board and by the future board that's put into place this year. On top of that, there are a lot of concerns being raised with special education and contractual language that needs to be looked at to make sure that the teacher's contract is in accordance with the law, but in order to do that, we need to vote to approve the current G E A contract in order to move to the next step so that can be evaluated. And so those are probably the two main priorities and challenges that our school board is facing right now.
Tessa Freevert.
So just to reiterate what Blair, David, and Matt have all said, our school is facing some unprecedented challenges right now in regards to our interim superintendent and an unsigned teacher contract. What I, the biggest challenge that I see right now for the school board in this position is communicating to the public, communicating to our community what their restrictions are, what their job description is, what they are really able to do, and what steps they have to take to, to make, to smooth this whole process over. Certainly, we always encourage community involvement, and we want to hear those parent voices, but I think that sometimes patience goes a long way towards just smoothing out the process in general.
The fourth question goes first to David Congezer, whose internet connection is really rough, so we'll be seeing a photograph of him. For question 4: For which programs, services, and/or personnel would you prioritize funding in the case of inadequate resources? David?
Yeah, you know, that's always going to be an issue is, is funding for the schools, and I think, you know, we need to really dive deep into what our priorities are. I think for Griffin School District, we need to address our I E P needs, our I E P staff, and make sure that they have the resources they need and our kids have the resources they need to be successful there. I also would like to, you know, I have a science background. I'd love to bring some science opportunities to our, our school in the forms of hands-on restoration opportunities, as well as some actual curriculum development through partnering with our local jurisdictions.
You have 15 seconds.
I'm sorry, I was finished.
Thank you. Matt Dorsey.
Oh, sorry. I was waiting for the camera light to turn red. Is that, am I good?
Let's try it again.
Let's try it again.
I think in the control room, they'll, they'll switch to you, but I'll start again.
Okay.
Matt Dorsey.
Well, as we sit here having this conversation today, Griffin teachers are working without a contract, so I think the obvious answer to me is we have to fund our staff, and we have to fund our teachers. On top of that, we need to be offering the most competitive wages to attract the best and most qualified instructional experts that we can get or that are available. We also need to invest in just continued professional development and continued learning so our educators are up to date on the best instruct, on the best instructional methods. So those are the areas I think that we should really look at as priorities for funding for this school. Thanks.
Tessa Freevert.
Thank you. I will always prioritize funding personnel that work closest with our students. I simply will not compromise on making sure our students receive a quality education. That said, the best way to avoid a budget shortfall is to make sure our levies pass. Our levies, all of our tax dollars, make up a significant amount of our overall budget, nearly one quarter of it, and without that money, we will be unable to maintain the caliber of education that Griffin School is used to. I am definitely interested in bringing in or partnering with outside sources to explore resource development through grants or programs to make sure our students and teachers have the materials and training that they need. However, truthfully, without those maintenance and operation levies, Griffin would struggle to keep its doors open.
Blair Baker.
Thank you. I will always advocate and support for our teachers and our support staff. I think creating stability for those familiar faces for our kids is vital, making sure it comes down to not just our teachers, but our lunchroom staff, our bus drivers, our office staff, our librarians. Keeping those quality people in place is vital to creating a stable environment for our children, and to do so, we have to be willing to fund those people. And our special education department falls under that same realm for me. That's basic education that every student's entitled to, so funding those folks is also vital to making sure that we stabilize our children. Making sure that we're updating our curriculum and advancing in those areas is also vital, in my opinion. Making sure that we're supporting those levies. We have one on the table in February, and that must pass. The funding we get from O S P I simply is not enough to make sure that that keeps our doors open for Griffin, so making sure that we support that in our district is so important to ensuring the stability going forward for our kids.
The fifth question goes first to Matt Dorsey. Question 5: How would you address student lags in academic performance due to distance learning during the past several years because of the pandemic?
How to address academic lags? Well, yeah, COVID's behind us, but we all know we're still dealing with the effects of it. Research and studies show that, you know, there was pretty significant learning loss during the pandemic, so, and I actually applaud Griffin even most recently with my daughter being out to school. I had learned they're implementing some cool things with pulling students out of P E for small periods of time to help them catch up on areas of academics they've fallen behind, so I would fully support that. I would just work on creating policies that just equip all of our students with all of the academic and social and emotional resources that they need to reach their full academic
Blair Baker.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, and I'll back up because Tessa was next.
Thank you, Danny.
How would you address student lags in academic performance due to distance learning during the past several years because of the pandemic?
Hang on, hang on.
I'm sorry, I was...
We can, we'll take them in order. We'll go to Tessa next.
Thank you. I thought that she was next in the order. Is that correct? I'm happy to answer, but I think...
Yeah, I think, I think, I think I got myself confused, Tessa.
All right, hang on. We'll throw to Tessa.
I'll throw to Tessa when I'm told to do that. Tessa Freevert.
Hang on, hang on.
Same question. Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay. I think I'm going to get a countdown here.
Three, two...
Tessa Freevert. How would you address student lags in academic performance due to distance learning during the past few years because of the pandemic?
That's a really good question. We definitely have seen some academic lag since the pandemic, but I think that we are very slowly but surely making up for those differences or that lag. What I think is important is that we need to make sure that we are providing each student with an individualized education plan where we are meeting students where they are and we're helping them grow from the point that they are at. We need to be making sure that this is equitable across the board, that all of our students, our special needs kids, our low-income students, our, our minority students, are all getting the services that they need to help grow academically.
Blair Baker.
Thank you. Again, really, really good question, and this is so specific to each individual child, and it really needs to be addressed at an individual level with each child, and I think this is part of where we have such an advantage of being such a small school district that we can provide more of these individual attentions to detail, where sometimes in these bigger districts, they struggle so much with it. I've seen our teachers in this district go above and beyond for these kids and really pay so much individual attention to where these children are lacking from this COVID pandemic. I think we're catching up, but I do think we have a long way to go, particularly where I see that is in that social and emotional piece. I think kids just really got hit hard with that, and that emotional learning, we have some areas to catch up on in that. I think in the academic realm, we're doing a really, really good job at Griffin. I think we are implementing some extra programs. I think we are taking the time. The teachers are working extra with kids. I've seen it with my own children, and I'm very impressed, but I do think that there is some ways to go, and I do think that that's something to be discussed going further in curriculum with the board.
David Congezer.
Yeah, you know, COVID kind of hit everybody a little bit differently, and, you know, some kids actually did a great job with distance learning. Vast majority, though, had some struggles. I think this is where we really need to partner with parents and figure out exactly where students are at with, you know, their needs and meet them where they're at. I think our current teaching staff has done an excellent job of, you know, integrating our kids back into what a normal type of curriculum and, and school, but, you know, I think this is an opportunity that, you know, the school district can really lean on parents to, to learn more about what, you know, individual needs a student has so we can meet those needs where the students are at.
The sixth and final question goes to Tessa Freevert. Question 6: What is your opinion of the board's role versus parents' role in decisions regarding curriculum and textbooks?
As a school board director, my role will be to support firm curriculum adoption policies that are budget-friendly and align with Griffin School District's strategic plan and goals. Ultimately, the state standards set by O S P I are the standards that we have to meet. During the curriculum adoption process, an instructional materials committee should be formed, and parents should be highly encouraged to be part of that committee. Once that instructional committee brings their recommendations to the board along with documented research and clear connections to those state guidelines, the board has the opportunity to request additional information or adopt the curriculum. I will always encourage parents to be as involved in their students' education as they possibly can be, including making decisions for their own children regarding appropriateness of curriculum and reading materials.
Blair Baker.
Thank you. Again, we do have to adhere to what O S P I puts in front of us as far as curriculum goes. I do believe in parent involvement, and I do believe that there needs to be more community involvement as far as what curriculum is put forward. We do have curriculum adoption policies that I do believe allow for committees to be put in place, parent committees. I do believe that nobody has the right to tell anybody else what their children have the right to learn, but they do have the right to what their children have the right to learn about. So parents can speak out and say what they are and are not comfortable with. I do believe in age-appropriate content. I don't believe always that what's being put in front of our children is age-appropriate, and that's something that we need to discuss, and that's something that we need to come together as a community and decide for our children what we're comfortable putting in front of them. I believe it's a small district, again, and I'll say it again, we have the luxury of being closer and being able to have more discussion about what contents are put in front of our children as we should.
David Congezer.
Yeah, again, this is another opportunity for, for us to partner with our parents to, you know, develop the curriculum and have an open and transparent process to adopting that. I think that's key to this whole, this whole piece of curriculum development, is having the transparent process where we can listen to parents and their concerns and, again, you know, take that into consideration when we are, you know, deciding what textbooks and material we put in front of our, our kids. It does need to be age-appropriate, and we do need to have some level of involvement from the parents to also fill in some of the gaps that, you know, they, the, the school district and curriculum might not be covering. So I think, again, parent involvement is, is key to this, to this aspect.
Matt Dorsey.
Yeah, the parents are the primary stakeholders in the child, child's education, full stop. I mean, they're the ones that enroll their child in the school as a student, and they're the ones that could unenroll them if they don't like the curriculum that's been adopted. I believe the role of the board is to set policy around curriculum adoption, and once that is done, the board could kind of step out of the way and let the instructional directors kind of create and pilot the curriculum that is in line with state and federal guidelines. But the board's policy does need to include the formation of a committee made up of -- parents and community members to partner with the school to vet the curriculum. This is how we ensure that all students can see themselves in the instructional materials and make sure that the content of the curriculum is grade-level appropriate. No one wants to ban books, but it is absolutely the right of the parents and the school to make sure that the books being allowed in the school are grade-level appropriate.
You now have one minute for a closing statement, beginning with Blair Baker.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the League of Women's Voters for this opportunity to speak in front of you today. I really appreciate the opportunity to address the public. Griffin's an amazing place, and we have a really unique opportunity as a small school district to set an example for other school districts as to what a functional school district can be. But that has to happen through transparency and involvement with our public and our community. I believe that parents are a child's first teacher, and we need parents to be involved in this process. We need you to come together with us and help us develop these policies, help us to make these curriculum choices that's what's best for your children. Your voices need to be heard, and not just parents, but our community members. And I'll say it again, this school is the heart of our community. It is so important that we all embrace these kids and come together and address the needs of these kids in this community. It is all about the kids, and every decision we make needs to come back to what benefits these kids. And it's not about anything more than what's best for them.
David Congezer?
Yeah, thank you, League of Women's Voters, for this opportunity. I appreciate the, again, the access via Zoom. You know, now more than ever, we need strong leadership in our, in our school board. You know, we're facing some, some, some challenges. And, you know, we need to come together as a community. We need to have our parents to support for developing policies and guidelines that set our kids up for success as they enter today's society and the world in general. So, you know, I think I possess a unique set of skills where I can, I can be successful in that role and, you know, guide our, our school board into the future and, you know, with the kids as the focus and, you know, having parents also as partners in this endeavor.
Matt Dorsey?
Yeah, thanks to the League of Women's Voters for hosting today. I was inspired to run for the position of school board director because, like many of you, I've observed other local area school districts and the negative impact a board can have on a district and the overall community when they adopt ideological policies around things like curriculum and school safety that put parents in an adversarial relationship with the school. And I don't want to see Griffin follow this trend. As citizens, I believe the only recourse we have to this problem is to elect board members that have a fair and unbiased approach to education. So as school board director, I would work with my fellow board members and school administration to craft policies that focus on academic excellence but also provide all of the social and emotional needs that students need when they need them to make sure that students all achieve their full academic potential. Thanks.
Tessa Frevert?
Thank you. And thank you also to the League of Women Voters. As a school board director, I will be expected to represent the voice of the entire community. It's important for directors to be able to listen to all sides of an issue and form educated, equitable, policy-based decisions with a cool, calm head and without personal bias or hidden agenda. A school board director should be willing to work collaboratively with the community and the school with our children being our sole focus. I firmly believe in the public education system and its goal of educating all students holistically. I've done my homework to understand the laws that govern our schools in the areas of finance, curriculum, and personnel. We need to be putting kids first. It takes all of us, community members, parents, teachers, administrators, and the board to raise great kids. And at Griffin, we have really great kids.
Thank you, Tessa Frevert, Matt Dorsey, David Congezer, and Blair Baker for participating in this candidate forum. We thank our partner, Thurston Community Media, for producing and airing it. We're indebted to Thurston Community Media for years of making these forums happen and educating the voters. We encourage you to be a voter in the upcoming election on November 7. Every vote counts. Ballots will be mailed out around October 18, and you may be, you may register to vote up to election day. Thank you for watching.